I'm going to call this meeting of the Powhatan County School Board to order. Madam Clerk, let the minute show that all board members are here and present for our first meeting in January, as well as our student liaison, Jordan Winall. As we typically do, the first meeting in January is a reorganization meeting, and the first agenda item is that reorganization. And first on that is the election of the school board chairman. Are there any nominations for school board chairman from the board?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Joe Walters as chairman.
Okay, we have a nomination for Joe Walters. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Are there other nominations from board members?
Make a motion, nominations be closed.
Okay.
Second.
Second. So that motion is, motion and second. So at this point, we have a nominee, Mr. Joe Walters, to serve as school board chairman for the 2019 school year. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show that Mr. Joe Walters has elected school board chairman. Vote of five oh. It's now pass the gavel over. Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Before we move to item B, let me just say that I appreciate the continued support of my colleagues on the school board. It's been a pleasure to serve with you in this capacity over the past two years, and I look forward to this year. Thank you very much. Item B on our agenda, next item, election of school board vice chairman. Do we have a motion regarding vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we nominate Ms. Kim Emel as vice chair.
Have a motion to nominate Ms. Kim Emel as vice chair of the school board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further motions?
Chairman, I make a motion that we close nominations.
Have a motion, close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of closing nominations? Please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. In front of us, we have Ms. Kim Emel for vice chair. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Emel.
Thank you.
All right, next item, consider approval of superintendent's designees. Dr. Jones?
Yes. Each year, we have to approve superintendent's designee in case that I am absent, and also to sign VDOE reports and documents. The designees are the same as this previous year, Mr. Larry Johns, Dr. Amahundro, and Dr. Cheryl Thomas.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Dr. Jones's designees?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Next item, Dr. Jones?
Yes. Next item is consider approval for school board clerk and deputy clerks. School board clerk, we are recommending Michelle Wilson continue as school board clerk, and that Dorothy Tribble and Donna Horn continue as school board deputy clerks.
All right, any discussion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve item D. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item E, Dr. Jones?
Yes. Listed in this item are the proposed 2019 school board meeting dates, locations, and times. We have the dates for the year. As we've discussed previously, moving to more of a once-a-month meeting schedule, except during budget season, you'll see some standalone workshops. And then we also have a standalone workshop on June 25th to close out the fiscal year. And we also have on here our quarterly meetings with the board of supervisors listed. One change you'll notice from this year that we are recommending is that all meetings, except I think there's maybe one conflict, two conflicts, one in November and one other one, be held here at the Village Building. I know that the board had previously wanted to hold workshops at other locations in a hopes of more people coming to those workshops. It's been our experience in looking at that, that that hasn't really been the case, that we pretty much have the same audience we always have. There have been concerns expressed about not knowing where the meetings are and confusion about that. So we're recommending that all meetings, except where there's a conflict with another governing body, be held here at the Village Building for consistency's sake, and also staff time in terms of setting up the room and the technology that we use to reach our community.
All right, is there discussion regarding item E?
I'd just like to say thank you. That's what I've been thinking about and proposing for some time now. So I make a motion that we do that.
All right. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we vote on this item? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, that takes us to section two, and that's the official opening of our meeting. Dr. Jones has covered the item, but again, Madam Clerk, if you'll have the minutes reflected, all members of the school board are present this evening. We're joined by our student liaison, Jordan Winall, and also by Dr. Jones. We'll begin officially with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. I would ask if our new vice chair, Ms. Emel, would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if Mr. Conker would lead us in the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask that you be with us on the first meeting of this new year, 2019, as we publicly conduct the business of Powhatan County schools. Please guide us in our deliberations. We may make the best decisions in the interest of the students, the staff, the teachers, and citizens of Powhatan County. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, so we have tonight the agenda for this January 15, 2019, school board meeting. Do any members have changes necessary to the agenda? The draft agenda? Our hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the draft agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda as written.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Takes us to the approval of the minutes. And these are the minutes for November 13th, the last meeting of the Powhatan County School Board. Discussion regarding the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I had a correction on the November 15th, 5:00 PM minutes, page four. Under certification there of the closed meeting, it says four ayes and zero noes, nays. So we were all there, though, correct? Page four?
Mm-hmm.
So then, did everyone vote in the affirmative?
Yes.
So then it should say five.
So Madam Clerk, that's a scrutiny error, and we'll just have that corrected. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so I suppose we will vote on that, since we're amending the actual minutes that were posted publicly. So is there a motion? Ms. Emel's made a motion to amend the minutes as presented. Is there a second to amend the motion to clarify as verified by Ms. Wilson?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of amending the minutes for the 5:00 PM meeting, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Wilson, if you will amend the minutes as Ms. Emel has read to us. So, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes as amended for November the 13th, for the 5:00 PM, and as they are presented for the 7:00 PM.
All right, Mr. Cole, thank you, sir. Is there a second to Mr. Cole's motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Takes us to the review of the bills and receipts. Is there any discussion regarding item 2F? Questions or discussion regarding item 2F, bills and receipts? Our hearing none. That takes us to our first public comment period of the evening. This is an opportunity for delegations or individuals requesting to be heard to address the school board. The time limit is three minutes per individual and five minutes per group, with a 30-minute total time limit. We would ask that speakers address their comments to the board as a whole, and also that you would identify yourself, please, by name and address. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring the public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe that takes us into some presentations for the evening, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the proposed 2019-2020 division calendar. Dr. Amahundro is here to give a brief presentation on the process that we've used to get to this point, and also present our initial calendar that will be going out to the community for review, and then bringing back to you at another time, at a later meeting for approval, hopefully. Dr. Amahundro?
Good evening. So again, we are going to go over the process that we went through to get to this point with the division calendar. We've got... So each year, we do have a regional assistant superintendent's group, and we get together to talk about calendar development, so that we can discuss issues that may be relevant for families that live in one locality, work in a different locality, have children in a different locality, so to try to get as consistent as possible. And in the past, you'll remember that we did come up as a region to try to keep consistent with our spring and winter breaks as much as possible, as well as having a consistent spring break during the first full week of April. So we've stuck to that plan based on that regional discussion. We also had a local calendar committee. We had 14 members this year, and we met twice at our initial meeting. We talked a little bit about parent-teacher conferences. We talked about those winter and spring breaks, the exam schedule, both at the semester, as well as the final, end-of-year exams, and the potential for a multi-year calendar. I let them kind of ruminate with their constituents, and then we came back together as a group for a follow-up meeting to develop the final draft of the calendar. One of the big topics of discussion was the timing of parent-teacher conferences, as well as the need for a second parent-teacher conference, and that's going to be reflected in our final draft. We also talked about some different options for the end of the semester and the timing of that parent-teacher conference. This year, Halloween fell on a day that was of interest for someone maybe to have a half-day. That seemed to be something that was, again, of interest this year, but moving forward would not be something that would be helpful for our overall school calendar. And then also a discussion around half-days for exams, again, goes into the larger exam day discussion. So the recommendations that followed after some of those discussions, both at the regional level and then at the local level, was that classes will begin that first Tuesday after Labor Day. That is a mandate that we continue to follow from the state. We will include our 180 required student days, and the classes will end on June 12th. We recommend that there be parent-teacher conferences Monday, November 11th. That's similar to the timeframe that we had this year, and it was well-received by both teachers and parents, because it gave time for actual report cards to be finalized and then sent home, and parents and teachers to communicate about scheduling those. We have continued for the, this was the second year where we had 12 to 7 was the timeframe for our conferences. Again, that allowed parents who may work either within the locality or outside of the area to be able to get in for afternoon or evening conferences as needed. And then, we only have one parent-teacher conference scheduled on the calendar this year, and that is the November date. We found that the February date was not widely used at all levels, and that the opportunity for parents to meet with teachers is much more available through technology, and if there are issues with students, that we have those conferences ongoing with parents. And so to have a scheduled date for parent-teacher conferences, again, wasn't well-utilized, so we're going to transition that to professional development time for our teachers, understanding that we are always happy to meet with parents at any time that they request that. And then holidays, you can see the listing of the holidays that are the key holidays here. Again, that spring break is the first full week in April, and it does include Easter Monday. It just happens to fall that way on this calendar. So the next steps, again, we did this last year, was we put together a community survey. If you all are amenable to it, we will push that out through our parents, to our parents, through our principal's message this weekend, and then have time for feedback from the community prior to the final recommendations at our February school board meeting. Questions or comments?
All right, thank you, Dr. Amahundro. Questions for our speaker, or for Dr. Jones? Mrs. Emel.
Were the teachers okay with not having the second conference day?
Yes. It actually, it was a discussion both with the parents and the teachers.
Parents and teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and they were both okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it was elementary teachers who really talked about it, because they said, their comment was that they have 20 to 25 kids in their class, they often don't get to see all of the parents, and that the students who really need it, they're in constant communication with those parents anyway.
Okay. And what was the thing about Halloween?
There was a request that we have a half-day on Halloween, so that parents and students can get home in time to be able to get ready for Halloween. So, and we pushed that. It fell, interestingly, that we might be able to consider that at the end of the nine weeks this year, but it just didn't seem to be something that we wanted to enter into for a long-term commitment.
Well, I would think the teachers would want November 1st, myself, if we did that. All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, other questions or comments?
I had one, I know that there, I'm sorry, I know there's a bill that talks about having election days off, and even, I mean, a state bill, I'm pretty sure that that's what they're talking about. And I guess if that passes this year, I wonder if that would be applicable to our next school year, if we would, I mean, our calendar's already made.
I think as far as I'm aware, that only is when schools are being used as polling locations.
Okay.
And our schools are not used as precincts or polling, or voting locations, so I think we would be...
Though, if we did have to move to that, we could easily move the date that we have assigned as the parent-teacher conference on the 11th, which is the Monday, to the previous Tuesday, which would be election day. So it would be an amendment that we would have to request approval for, but it is, we do have time at that, in that general area. It just doesn't fall as nicely for our grading period and to make sense.
Okay. Well, thank you, and maybe it won't even be...
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it, and if we have to amend the calendar, then we can always come back and do that, if it happens after approval.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ayers, Dr. Jones. Further questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Mr. Cole?
I'm not, the calendar itself is fine. I do have some continuing concerns about first semester exams. You know, there is certainly good reason to put them before Christmas, but your calendar's awkward in that it's 20 days after that that we finish the first semester. You know, as a board, I don't know that, I'm wondering whether we ought to go to the BSBA and make another pitch as a part of that continuing legislative position for Labor Day, that we put the argument in there that instructionally, it makes a lot more sense if you can have marking periods that follow the traditional calendar, rather than marking, you know, than what we're forced into now by the post-Labor Day opening. So it's just another argument for that, and maybe something that we want to talk to the BSBA about in terms of doing that.
And I think that's a good point, and something we should certainly lobby with. But I think there's also going to be some discussions at the high school level about midterm exams next year, getting some feedback from staff in the community, and that's a discussion that will be held. So we put the exam schedule in now as a placeholder, because we haven't had time to have those discussions, given the experience that we had this year with the snow right before Christmas, which is one of the main reasons we moved exams to before, from January, to avoid that. So, again, that may be something that we bring back as an instructional issue that may require the calendar be amended, if that is the recommendation that comes from the high school.
I would also ask that, as they had that discussion, because of their attention to remediation and summer school now and all those things, does the traditional calendar that we have continue to make sense from an instructional point of view and from a practices point of view for the things that we're doing? Would it make better sense for us to have shorter marking periods with built-in days for summer school now and things like that? I don't know. I know that creates other issues, but, you know, I've never been convinced as an educator that this calendar was educationally sound in terms of helping kids master information to begin with, and helping them retain information over the long term. So if they come up with something creative and something that looks, you know, that we should think about, you know, I think the best ideas come from teachers and the people that do it every day. So I hope that we'll open that discussion up to more than just exams, and open it up to what makes sense to us as we work with students over the course of the school year.
We certainly do that.
Ms. Winall is our student liaison. Would you like to contribute anything to this discussion about when the exams for midterm are scheduled?
So for the midterm exams, I felt like because of the snow, it kind of threw it off a little bit. I know that a lot of people were freaking out about their first block exam, which, I mean, I have first block study hall, so I guess it didn't really affect me as much. But I know with my brother, he was pretty worried about it, because he didn't have as much time in the first block, since that is like a 50-minute day. So he was stressing out at home during the snow, trying to get everything together. I feel like if we didn't have the snow, it wouldn't be as big of a deal, but because Virginia weather's so unpredictable, it's hard to plan around our weather.
Okay, all right. That's a saying about Virginia, if you don't like the weather today, wait for tomorrow, because it'll be something different. So, all right, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if at your area meeting, or at the local one, has there been any talk about any districts going to year-round schools?
Not specifically year-round school. There are two schools, I think, in Chesterfield right now that are experimenting with that. Some of them are on four-by-four, meaning they take four classes first semester and four classes second semester. Some of those are talking about going back to a more traditional program. There are a few schools within our region, actually one, that is able to start before Labor Day, and that's Goochland, and they're not technically, they are in our region, yes. So they do get to start earlier than us. So that provides an interesting discussion when we get to AP testing and things like that, that they have different opportunities for their students to have longer time in instruction prior to AP testing than we do, gives them some flexibility at the end of the semester that they can close out at the end of the holiday, or before the holiday break. But no real discussion about year-round school as a group at this point.
Thank you.
All right, further questions or comments? Dr. Jones, Dr. Amahundro made a comment during her presentation about pushing this out with the principal's message. You're not looking for our approval to do that?
No, I think that's just the process that we followed, is really just keeping you up to date on the process that we're using to get community input, and we'll bring those results back to you in February with any modifications based on that feedback for, hopefully, for approval in February.
All right, thank you, sir, and thank you, Dr. Amahundro. All right, sir?
Thank you. Next item is the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. Mr. Johns is going to come and walk us through this plan. Of course, two of the big projects, we've knocked out of that, but we still have some capital projects that are needed that we're going to go through at this time. Mr. John?
Yes, sir. Good evening. There's basically about five changes in this CIP as compared to what you saw last year, and this is just presented for information tonight. It'll be brought back at the next board meeting for your approval. The first change is the addition of the train project. The funding for that project has been, that loan has been done this year, and that is starting. The next two changes were the decreases to the projected needs at Pocahontas Elementary and Powhatan Elementary, since that train project is addressing many of the things that were in the CIP for those schools. And as a result of that, this CIP is about $9 million lower in total than what we had last year. And so the last change in here is the funding of the PMS repurpose. That $1,284,000 is the amount that, of the financing that was obtained in 2018. That is the first stage of what is going to be done. The $1,355,000 for the future sections that would not be occupied initially. And so the decisions as to what really is going to happen to that are not determined yet, but out of the 1.2 million, that is for the school offices that would be located there, central office, staff, and other staff, as well as the county staff. And so that's what that is for. So any questions about those? As I said, this is presented in draft tonight, will be brought back for the board.
I would also add, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that it would also provide space for the memorabilia and remembrance of the history of the school as part of that project. Those are the three priorities that we identified, and those are the three that would be accomplished through this funding.
All right. Other questions or comments?
You're talking about the whole CIP, or just this? Just the train?
At this point, I believe.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought...
And I may have answered your question incorrectly, then. So are you taking, at this point, taking questions about the presentation as a whole, correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay. Ms. Emel, if you have a question, please proceed.
I did. On page five, or slide five, the, I had a few questions on the high school, under a project description. It says smaller program areas. What would, what would those be? Is it like a...
I think that is, that's up in the air. That would be part of the design process that we would have. There was a footprint, when the building was designed, to do a classroom addition of nine core classrooms, and some other spaces that really weren't defined. So I think if we moved forward this and received some funding, or even before we received funding, if there was additional specificity needed, we could go through a design process and see, are there other things within that footprint beside the classrooms that we need in the school?
Right.
So it could be meeting rooms, it could be staff lounge, it could be lots of different things.
So the school and the administration will have time to add their input before that's done?
Absolutely, yeah. That's kind of, it's really just the 13,585 square feet that is what we're asking for funding for, and then how we section that off, and what it looks like would be something similar to what we did with the middle school design process.
Okay. And so are these classrooms needed now?
No, they're not needed now, which is why we pushed them to the end of the CIP. We're really just getting them on the CIP so that people are aware that if we do see a spike in enrollment, that it may be something that we would need down the road. So right now, we have capacity for the students that are there, but it is something, just like the land purchase for a future elementary school, that we want to make sure we get on the CIP, because it may be something that we have a need sooner rather than later. It may get pushed back on the CIP if enrollment stays flat, as it has been the last couple of years.
Okay. And then my last question is, what is in the field house?
The field house at the high school?
Yeah, because it says we're going to do some work in there. What is a field house?
The field house is the athletic facility back by the football field that houses locker rooms for boys and girls' sports teams, offices. There's a small weight room in there, some restrooms, those types of things.
And where is that located?
It's just, if you're looking at the football field, just to the right of the football field.
In the concession stand?
Yes, beside the concession stand.
Right beside the concession stand.
Behind the uprights.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ayers.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Ayers.
And even though it's been quite a while ago, I feel like it's only been a few years ago, but at the high school, I know there was a discussion at the time it was built to go ahead and lay the footings for that addition. Were they done, or were they not done? I don't remember.
They haven't been...
They have not.
Yeah, there was just some pad work done in terms of soil and that type of thing, but there's no foundation or footing that have been done.
Okay, that was my question. I couldn't remember whether we had done that or not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I pause, I don't know if it was Mr. Cole or Mr. Conker.
Yes, sir. It's just a question about the train energy audit. Have we established a baseline energy cost? Because this is going, there's a guarantee that we're going to pay for this over the course of however many years with savings. So I'm assuming that we've established what our average energy costs are for all these areas, and we're going to be able to use that as a baseline to measure and to report that. It's going to be reported back on an annual basis, so we'll know if we are indeed saving this, because, you know, I'm assuming that if we don't meet those targets, that they'll Because, you know, I'm assuming that if we don't meet those targets, that they'll refund us part of the money. Is that correct?
Right, those are guaranteed savings. So if we don't meet those targets, then train would be responsible for meeting up to that target. They probably spent six months reviewing all of our energy records. We shared everything with them. They went and did thorough reviews of all of our buildings. So all of that information, the baseline has been established. That baseline has also been established within our current parameters of heating and cooling. So it's not, we're going to lower the temperature to 65 degrees in the winter, and that's how we're going to get the savings. The parameters we established to keep them where we currently are. But those savings are ones that are guaranteed.
So there's a system for reporting that back annually so that we can track it. I don't want to make the same mistake we made with SIP, with retirement plan a few years ago, where we never tracked it. So we are going to track this and.
There's actually an audit built into the contract that we do on, in years two, and I think, believe three, to make sure. And then if we meet our targets those two years, then we don't go through the audit process again. But there is a formal audit process, and that will be presented to the school board.
Great, thank you.
And if I may add, there's also measurement and verification cost in that so that, you know, we can have data for that audit cost.
All right. Other questions or comments? Dr. Jones, I'll just take the opportunity, just since Mr. Johns is at the podium, I want to commend you and your staff. As this points out, we completed two major projects in FY 2019, the middle school and joint transportation facility. They've been removed from the five-year CIP. But importantly, both of the projects were completed under budget.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Wilson, prior to Dr. Tibbs, but certainly Dr. Tibbs, you, we had monthly reports. Every time we met, you gave us a report about the status of the project, the funding, where we were, where we were going with our expenditures. And I really appreciate the level of engagement that you, Dr. Jones, and your staff had in that. As, you know, we certainly strive as a board to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And I think that's very important. Both projects were finished under budget. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I just say, you know, we, we were asking every month, and I hope that you know why we were asking every month, because it was so important to us to have it done on time and under budget. So good point, Mr. Walters.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next item, Dr. Jones.
Sure. The last item for our presentations is updates to the course planning guide. I'm asking Dr. Omahundro to come back to the podium and lead us through updates to the course planning guide.
Good evening again. So each year, we do go through and analyze our course guide for our secondary schools to determine what our offerings are, if they're meeting the needs of our students. And I always think that we've done it exactly right, and then we get back into it for the next year, and we've got revisions. So here are our revisions for this year. We did sit down during our annual review with several groups of stakeholders. At the school level, we asked for teacher input, we asked for department leader input, certainly our administrative teams, and actually our school counselors too, because sometimes they're the folks that hear the direct information from our students about what they're being able to take. And then we also have our division-wide instructional team that reviews that, as well as directors. And then in the last two years, the VDOE has directed some needs for changes to our course guide. So just some of the general updates that we have. We did change our online learning service to Apex. And so many of the changes that are in that section are related to the offerings, either changes of names that they have for courses, as well as the Apex as our provider. We also had some questions about the GPA calculation and class rank, and how that transitioned between the middle school and the high schools. So we put some clarity to that, showing that rising ninth graders who take summer school courses prior to the ninth grade have those calculated as part of their GPA. The VDOE impacts that we had were, this year, the graphing calculators are no longer required for SOL testing. Students are able to use the Desmos calculator, and we are fortunate because we have a one-to-one computer initiative. So we have that on our laptops, or on our Chromebooks, rather. So some of the naming in the, in the guide needed to reflect that we're using Desmos as our online calculator. Also, the English writing credit is allowed to be a performance-based assessment, and we are moving forward with that. So that information is outlined as a portfolio over the course of ninth through 11th grade in order to earn their writing verified credit. Also, we have reduced requirements for verified credits for the advanced and standard diploma. Moving forward, students who are entering the ninth grade only require five verified credits. That's reflected in the initial information. We are phasing out earth science at the middle school in order for our students to get to the higher level of science that they aspire to at the high school level. Advancing them in the sciences to get to earth science by the end of middle school is not required. It also will allow us to have a better foundation for students who want to go to some of the more advanced sciences at high school level. So we're phasing that out, and it will create multiple pathways for students at high school, either starting at earth science, bio, or environmental science as a ninth grader. And then finally, at the DOE level, we have a new seal under the Board of Education. That's for bioliteracy, and there are several requirements for students who may want that seal. There are very few core content changes, but I mentioned a little bit about the sciences. At the middle school, at science six, again, we had an integrated path. We still will have that available for our seventh and eighth grade students who have started that integrated path. But for rising sixth graders, they will just take their regular, traditional sixth-grade course, and then will be able to advance at seventh and eighth grade. It allows for a smooth transition for our sixth graders, and then they'll have those advanced opportunities in seventh and eighth grade. At the math level, sixth and seventh grade is integrated if students are on an advanced track. And this is just a name change to match what the courses that they're being offered. And that will ultimately get them to Algebra I in eighth grade. And then a little photo of the sequence chart that I created along with the help of the instructional specialist so students can see, and this is in full size in the course guide, so students and parents can see what a traditional track would look like if they are on a grade-level pathway or if they are on advanced pathway in each of the core content areas, grades six through 12. And the nice thing you can see is there's just a nice variety of options for students as they age up. In career and technical education, some of the changes include the fact that we needed to have Intro to Early Childhood as a full-year course. We feel like offering that will provide a better background to some of the rest of the courses within the pathway. Also, we're adding a hospitality course to the family consumer sciences that was from student and staff interest. We removed the high school credit assigned to some of the CTE courses, actually to all of the CTE courses at the middle school, allowing students really just to get a taste of some of those CTE courses, and then offering them for high school credit at the high school. At the high school level also, we have been working with our carpentry and electricity programs and have now expanded to a building trades program, which will also incorporate HVAC, masonry and plumbing, Dr. Tibbs? Into that course, which broadens students' exposure to those trades. And then the cosmetology course has been updated at the DOE level, and the course guide now reflects the three credit courses that the students will earn each year. Sports medicine two, also, in order to offer sports medicine two, students are required to do some work outside the classroom. So the course description describes that requirement for outside work, whether it's through internship or extra coursework. At the electives level, there are some name changes. Foreign languages now is known as world languages. That's something that the DOE has updated in recent years, and so we are also following suit. And wind ensemble will now be known as wind symphony. A new format for electives, the electives before at the middle school were listed within the content areas. So it was listed in with the CTE courses or the English courses or the math courses if there were electives related to that. Instead, what we've added is a chart for parents. It's a one-stop shop for parents and students to look at all of the middle school elective offerings by grade level. And we hope that will help students and parents plan better for their electives offerings. And then had great response for our engineering course at the high school, and so we're offering a Level Two course for students. There is a math requirement that goes along with that because of the advanced work that they're going to do within that course. We're very excited about that. Also, this was just a desire to highlight something that's pretty special and unique. Computer science has traditionally sat within our mathematics section, and we just have such a robust computer science program, it needed its own section. So we have created that to highlight some of the offerings. We've also upgraded to a full year of cybersecurity, and we're offering a new computer systems tech class, which is actually the ability for us to offer course credit to students who are working in our tech bar. So if you'll, if you know, we do have a tech bar in our library at the high school where students can turn in their Chromebooks if they need repair. We have students who work on those, and they are doing tremendous work. And we now have a course that will go along with that. They'll be offered credit for their work that they do there. We have a few retirements, some courses that have been traditionally in the course guide but have not made or have had low enrollment. They still exist in the course guide, they're just at an appendix in the end. So in the event that we want to bring them back, we don't have to come back for school board approval. But again, they have been moved to an appendix at the end, and you can see a list of those there. And so where we go from here, we are in the midst of getting ready for scheduling season. So at the end of this month, there's an instructional showcase at the high school. Then the middle school will visit sixth graders. The counselors will go to each of the three elementary schools. Then also in February, we have a seventh and eighth grade parent night at the middle school, a separate rising sixth grade parent night for new middle school parents. And then February is the scheduling window for each of the students. And in April, students will receive a course verification form that will go home with their report card for them to review their schedule for the following school year. So that's where we are.
All right, questions or comments for Dr. Omahundro or Dr. Jones? Ms. Ziemel.
Okay, slide, slide three. The phasing out the earth science.
Yes.
At the middle school?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm a little bit confused about that.
Okay.
So sixth grade is integrated science?
Currently.
Currently.
Current sixth graders take integrated science one, integrated science two as a seventh grader, and then earth science as an eighth grader.
As the eighth grader, okay. So then we're saying we're taking out the eighth grade earth science class.
And with the integrated science one and the integrated science two, the sixth and seventh grade current courses, compacted grades six, seven and eight science, as is designed by the state, into two years so that students could advance and take the earth science course. So that's as it is now.
Right. So what are we, for the new upcoming sixth graders?
Correct.
They're going to choose the integrated sixth grade and integrated seventh grade?
No, so no longer. So now what will happen is for the rising sixth graders, the current fifth graders, when they see their course selection, they will all be scheduled into science six. And that is a survey course of sorts in that it shows a variety of different sciences. And then as seventh graders, they will take life science, and as eighth graders, they will take physical science. Both the life science as seventh graders and the physical science as eighth graders will be offered as a regular course or an advanced course, collaborative, whatever the student needs.
And so then earth science just gets put into the sixth and a little bit of?
There will be no earth science at all at the middle school level. Then when they advance to ninth grade, they'll have a choice. Students can take earth science as a ninth grader, they could take biology as a ninth grader, or they could take a new environmental science course as a ninth grader. So that's an option. And then the course sequence path chart that I created, that has what those options are for students moving forward as ninth through 12th graders. And really, it is, and Mrs. Kitten would say this, the one thing about science is that there are so many offerings for students at the high school level that students really can choose what their passion track is. They still have to take a minimum of two types of science courses. So they can't take all biologies, or they can't take all earth environmental science-type courses, or they can't take all physics courses. But they can take more of what they enjoy. And so this pathway allows them to take more of what they enjoy.
Okay, all right. And then I had a second question on slide five. The.
Yes.
Removed high school. Which, which high school credit courses at the middle school did we take away? You had mentioned that.
Yes, so there's still going to be similar courses, it's just for high school credit. And we had several discussions around what this, why we should do this. One again is, we were advancing kids in so many high school credit courses, and we've had several discussions about if kids come in with so many high school credit courses, what do they do that senior year and how do they fill their time? And so this slows that a touch. But also, it really gives students an opportunity to try some different things without that pressure of a high school credit associated to it. So there will be similar offerings, they just are not taking it for high school credit. And there still will be time for them, once they get to high school, to take those sequential electives in CTE and arts that are required for graduation.
Okay, and so then I noticed in slide 20 in the regular course guide, the languages. It, it mentioned exploring French and Spanish. And then it had French one and Spanish one. And then it had foundations of Spanish and French. So are we still going to have world languages first for sixth graders to try out everything?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so these courses that we're taking out for high school credit are in career and technical education. We're still going to keep high school credit offerings as a potential offering in world languages and in art. So, but we also have adapted the offerings at the middle school level for world languages so students can try languages in multiple, at multiple years, in sixth, seventh or eighth, without the full commitment to a language. But we were seeing that what happened was we had the opportunity for that exploratory in language at sixth grade. And unless you jumped on the language train in seventh and eighth grade, you may not have an opportunity to continue to explore or even start the exploration. So this allows students to be able to still explore as a seventh or eighth grader those languages if they did not choose that exploration as a sixth grader. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, wonderful. Sounds like you've done some real good changes to offer more opportunities for everyone. Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? It's an exciting curriculum, I've got to tell you. I enjoy looking through this, and I'm always so, so impressed with the breadth of the types of courses that we offer and that are available for our students. The fees that are associated with some of these courses, many of them have a fee of some kind, and not speaking so much to the AP fees, but to some of the other types of courses. When is the fee schedule going to be available for us?
So the fee schedule is presented in July each year, and that will be, it doesn't change too much year over year, but it is presented in the summertime.
Okay.
Would you like?
No, and that's fine. That's just something I'm always concerned about because I do notice many of these have a fee associated with them. And I would not want that to be something that would discourage a student that's interested in a course. I know that there are mechanisms available to help, to help in those situations, and just want to make sure that we've got that available. So as the parents are thinking about those opportunities.
Yes, and we do try to make that as available to them and that they are aware of that. And I know the principals work individually with families. School counselors often are that real, true middle man in that case to identify students who may not feel like they can afford to take a class, but we make it happen.
All right, very good.
And I would also, thank you. I would also add, Mr. Chairman, that probably 90% of those fees are mandated fees that we have to collect as part of the course, especially all the CTE courses. So there are other courses where we have a fee like band, and some of those courses are, and that type of thing. But the major ones that would concern us and our major investment are those CTE courses.
All right, very good. All right, other questions or comments? Ms. Ayers.
Would you be able to send us the suggested course sequence, the full page? Because no matter how big I made this, I still couldn't really read it.
Yes.
That would be okay?
Yes, I'll send it separately, yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Dr. Omahundro. All right, so I note on our agenda that that takes us to our closed session. And we have a time-certain meeting with the Board of Supervisors, a school board and Board of Supervisors joint workshop. So for those in the audience, what we'll be doing this evening is we'll be recessing from this meeting. We will go into a meeting at 6:00 PM with the Board of Supervisors, a joint workshop. When we adjourn from the joint workshop, we will reconvene into this meeting, we'll be reconvening into closed session, and we'll conclude this meeting. So there'll be a bit of a break as we complete this work, because we're going to take a recess in a moment. I'm going to ask for a motion to recess, and then we will be moving into that second meeting with the Board of Supervisors, the joint workshop. So at this point, do I have a motion to recess?
So moved.
I have a motion, is there a second for recess?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of recess, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are recessed at this point.
Your blessing this evening on this joint meeting of the Powhatan County School Board and the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. We ask that you will guide us and lead us to make good decisions in the best interest of the citizens of this county. In thy name we pray.
Thank you, sir. Are there any requests to postpone or change anything on the agenda as has been presented by the superintendent and the county administrator? Then may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Do we have to do separate? Board of Supervisors?
I move we approve the agenda as printed.
All the members of the Board of Supervisors who agree, say aye.
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 Is there a motion for members of the school board to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
We're in that public comment period. If you wish to address either one of these boards or these boards jointly, would you come forward to the podium, give us your name and address, hold your comments to three minutes if you possibly can, unless you're representing an organization, in which case we'll give you five minutes. Please don't make political statements or try to sell any products during this presentation, and address the board on issues which the board has control over, either one of these boards. If you wish to address these boards, come forward, please. Seeing no one come forward for the public comment period, I close it. We're at item number three, for those of you who are following along the agenda. We're going to recognize the Powhatan High School Robotics Team.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Chairman. We asked the Powhatan High School Robotics Team, normally we would be recognizing them at a school board meeting, but we thought it appropriate to do it at this joint meeting because this team actually got its start with the Powhatan County Library through a grant that the library received, and then over the years has transitioned to be a high school, a VHSO activity team. But I thought it would be important to, the efforts that the county had to get this team started, be recognized, and that's why we're recognizing them at this time. So if the school board can join me down on the floor, and if the Board of Supervisors want to join us, we'd love to have you, as we recognize these outstanding young people.
The Powhatan High School Robotics Team, Powhatan Spear, sensational people, excited about robots, recently won first place in the First Tech Challenge Regional Qualifier and also won the Inspire Award. This judged award is given to the team that embodied the challenge of the First Tech Challenge program. The team that receives this award is a strong ambassador for first programs and a real role model, first team. This team is a top contender for many other judged awards and is a gracious competitor. The Inspire Award winner is an inspiration to other teams, acting with gracious professionalism, both on and off the playing field. This team shares their experiences, enthusiasm, and knowledge with other teams, sponsors their community and the judges. Working as a unit, this team will have showed success in performing the task of designing and building a robot. Required criteria for the Inspire Award include, the team shows respect and gracious professionalism to everyone they meet at the First Tech Challenge event. The team is a strong contender for several other judged awards. The Inspire Award celebrates the strongest qualities of all the judged awards. The team is an ambassador for first programs. They demonstrate and document their work in their community. The team is positive and inclusive, and each team member contributes to the success of the team. The team members of Powhatan Spear are Grayson Batson, Graham Batson, sorry, Paige Condra, William Cosby, Freddie Douglas, Lindsey Freeman, Anthony Gentry, Landon Hooks, Luke Jordan, LeAnn Lightsey, Joel Messer, Jay Nixon, Jeremy Patton, Alexander Sarver, Mira Strong, Colleen Trot, and Makaya Turner. PHS would also like to thank Mr. Benway, Mr. Beasley, and Mrs. Kitten for their sponsorship of the program, and appreciate the additional support of our parent volunteers, Tom Douglas and Jeff Patton.
Congratulations. 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 Great job. Congratulations. Slide down a little bit. Keep coming. There you go. You're good. Slide behind me.
While everybody was taking pictures, the Powhatan Spear was one of Richmond Regional Competition on February 2nd, I believe. Is that correct? February 2nd is the next competition. It's a state level competition. They'll be competing in Athlete High School on February 2nd. So if you have some fun, if you want to go out and see an amazing competition, I was there for the regional one, and it is incredible watching the robots compete and all the work that the students and their coaches do. So we wish them the best of luck at state level on February 2nd. Congratulations on your accomplishments thus far.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah. Minor dysfunction with ours.
Okay.
Okay.
Or I can just pop over if you want, since I'm not that scared.
They've done very well.
Oh, it doesn't matter. I'm not that set up, so I'll scoot. Here, I can scoot over sometimes. Where do you want me to go? Okay. Here. Where are you going? Just sliding. We have all this space. All these people are here.
Absolutely.
This is so nice. This is a lot of space.
Yep.
All right. So this takes us to item 4A on the agenda. That's the repurposing of the school administration office in Pocahontas Middle School. That's a discussion will be led by staff of Dr. Jones and Mr. Voorhees. Dr. Jones, Mr. Voorhees?
Yes. We have a couple of presentations for these two projects. And Dr. Tibbs is here for the school division. I believe Ms. Ramona Carter is here to speak to the county side to give both boards an update on where we are with the repurposing of Pocahontas Middle School and the subsequent work on Skaggs Road.
All right. Thank you, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, everybody. The first presentation is on the school side, the repurpose of Pocahontas Middle School. First, I'd like to extend appreciation and gratitude for approving this project. Contracts were awarded very quickly as we were notified that this project was going to be able to go forward. The first contract that was awarded was for Roof Consulting Services. If you'll recall, this is the biggest part of the project, is replacing the roof on the building, and so we've contracted with Roof Consulting Services. They are doing a roof replacement design. They will be doing the construction administration for that project, as well as asbestos testing. At this point, they are doing the drawings and the layout of the roof, taking dimensions. They've cored every section of the roof. They've come back a couple of times and taken core samples of the roof as well, just to see the material and the matter in which the roof is comprised of. We've also contracted with Quinn Evans Associates, or Architects, rather. Quinn Evans is actually BCWH. They joined with Quinn Evans, and so we've contracted with them, working with them on interior improvements, modifications, and they are also helping us with existing mechanical system and controls evaluation with Ascent Technologies. Our timeline at this point is we anticipate a project start date on or about March the 1st. The transfer of the soccer and football field, softball and baseball field to Parks and Recreation will also occur on or about March the 1st, and we discussed that last week in a meeting. The transfer of the gym building to Public Works and Parks and Rec will happen on or about May 1st. We currently have organizations, Special Olympics is using the gym space, we've got adult education using the gym space, as well as basketball. Rec leagues are using the gym space, and they will be using the gyms, the gym at Pocahontas Middle School pretty much through the first, the second week of April. So once we get that, those taken care of, we will then transfer that building over to Public Works and Parks and Rec. We anticipate a move in of late summer, early fall, hoping that this project progresses fairly well and fairly quickly, and so we hope to be able to move from Skaggs Road into the Pocahontas Middle School building late summer, early fall. And then subsequently after that, after we clean out Skaggs Road, transfer the Skaggs Road building to Public Works in early fall.
All right. Ms. Carter.
Chairman Walters?
Mrs. Norvick, sir.
Do you want questions after the presentations or during?
I think that's at the pleasure of the board, and it might work a little better if we had questions from Dr. Tibbs before we move into Ms. Carter's presentation. Do you have a question, sir?
I do. I have a couple.
Mr. Norvick.
You mentioned asbestos, which is everybody's least favorite word when it comes to renovating. Do you anticipate a price tag with that of any significant amount?
We are hoping that there, we don't have any, because that roof was installed in 93 when the building was remodeled. So we are hoping that there is none. Roof Consulting Services actually did that work back then, so they have all of the records and everything there. It's just that that's what, part of the scope of the project that they have to do when they come out and bore and take samples of it, that's one of the things that they are testing for.
Is there any chance of any, in any of the duct work? Because I know part of that was, you know, the old elementary school front and et cetera, and that's still there. Anything?
At this point, depending on how the existing mechanical survey comes back, we are hoping to not disturb any duct work or any sort of mechanical work in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. Question two?
Yes, sir.
You know, we're talking about a transfer of the ball fields, the gym, Skaggs Road building, et cetera. Of course, the way, for the benefit of the public, the way it works for budget time, basically the Board of Supervisors in budgeting shoves a pile of money over toward the school board, and they, the elected officials also parse out the money on the school board's side as they see fit. Is there any sort of quid pro quo compensation for the county, so to speak, side getting these facilities back? Is there something? I know we're all one team, but is there any legal requirement? Is there any kind of transfer of money or material or swapping buildings going on in order to affect this change?
The one thing that we discussed last week, we discussed several options. One of the things is electricity in the gym building with Parks and Rec taking the gym building. How are we going to figure out who's paying for what electricity? We also talked about potentially long-term leasing and the documentations that need to come along with that. So we're very early in those stages at this point in trying to figure out how all that works.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions from members of either board? Mrs. Emel.
Dr. Tibbs, the addressing the mold and mildew problems, is that going to be in the, this face?
Specifically in what sections?
Well, the art room, that was the art room that had all that problem in there?
The humidity, it sometimes gets off in that room. When we address the mechanical issues, when they come out and do a mechanical survey, they will be looking at all of those and ventilation and the whole nine yards.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other questions from members of either board? All right. Ms. Carter, I believe the floor is yours.
Good evening, school board members and Board of Supervisors. I have prepared a brief presentation, PowerPoint presentation, but I think it was included in your packet, so in the interest of time, because we've got a lot of items on the agenda, I'm just going to summarize and then go to the very last slide. So to date, we have completed a building assessment that was done early last year, April. And then we have completed a space needs study with the various county departments. And we determined, based on all of that information, based on the building assessment, we did not get cost estimates at that time. We just determined that it was, the building was sound. So then we, from the space needs study, we determined that the best fit for the building was going to be the Public Works Department, the IT Department, and the Free Clinic. And so then we went back to the engineer architect and asked them for some estimates to do total renovation of what would be required, our wish list for that building. And the prices came in significantly more than the building was worth. So we went back, we met with Free Clinic, and we did a tour of the building. Jason took us through the building to see if we could use it with minimal renovations. And that's, that's the stage that we're at right now. So we're, I have talked with Quinn Evans, who is working with the schools on the interior design. We talked with them today and went through some, they're going to look at what we can do and kind of staying in a price tag that's reasonable for us. So the very last slide in the presentation just kind of summarizes where we're going to go from here. So we're going to continue to do some investigative work on the plumbing, because that was the big issue for the Free Clinic. And then based on that information, sometime in February, we should be able to determine if we can use that building for those three departments. And so we'll decide what we're going to do at that point. If we decide to occupy the building, we need to determine the transfer of the ownership, which you guys had asked that question earlier. And then obtain funding for construction. Now I have in our FY '20 CIP, I am putting some numbers in there, but we don't have those numbers firmed up yet, so I'll be adjusting that. And then, once the school board vacates the building, we will bid the project out and hire a contractor to do the renovations that are required. That, if anybody has any questions?
All right. Questions from Ms. Carter for members of either board?
Bottom line, it's doable, right?
It is doable.
It's not going to bankrupt us, right?
I hope not. There was a question about asbestos. There is asbestos in that building, and it's known. And so what we've asked Quinn Evans to do is to estimate how much it would take to abate that out.
Thank you.
Mrs. Emel.
And also, did you talk about the recent flooding and that general area of how that was damaged and lack of heating in the superintendent's office? So that they would know whoever has that office.
H vac, I mean, H vac upgrades for that building have been in our CIP for a number of years. The county staff's aware that there will be need, yes.
Just want to make sure that everybody...
Yes, and they are aware of the recent flooding incident.
And we have asked Quinn Evans to include the H vac upgrades.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Carter, I note that item two is decide if the county wants the building. So there is discussion, the county may not wish to take over ownership of the building?
That was just, that was based on the estimates, because the estimate came in at $1.8 million, and the building was worth $447,000. So at the time, and I hadn't talked to Quinn Evans at that time, so, and we hadn't met with the Free Clinic, but now it seems like it's, that we could occupy the building with minimal renovations, that it would work with those three departments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Just one comment.
Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Chairman. I'm hoping that these transfers will go through smoothly, and I know this is kind of new territory for both boards, and wondering whether the county attorney or somebody ought to take a look at exactly how these transfers ought to go. I know that it's ongoing and progress, but several other divisions do it on a fairly regular basis, so I'm sure there's a template out there that we can use. I'd just be interested in knowing what that template is and how that goes. The second thing is just a comment about the $1.8 million renovation, and how does that balance against, you know, if you did that, how would that balance against a new building? Could you build a new building for that amount? I don't know.
You could, yes.
So I know the renovation and the value of the building are all important considerations, but another consideration is, what would it cost to build that size building, you know, brand new from the ground up?
And we did go through that evaluation.
And I do appreciate y'all's work. I think this is a good move for the county, and we've been good stewards of the facilities we have. Thank you.
Ms. Carter, put on your tickler list his first idea. Let's make sure the lawyers look at this thing before we ink it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Carter, I note that item two is decide if the county wants the building, so there is discussion, the county may not wish to take over ownership of the building? Is that what that means?
That was just, that was based on the estimates, because the estimate came in at $1.8 million, and the building was worth $447,000, so at, at the time, and I hadn't talked to Quinn Evans at that time, so, and we hadn't met with the Free Clinic, but now it seems like it's, that we could occupy the building with minimal renovations, that it would work with those three departments.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Just, just one comment.
Mr. Colvin.
Mr. Chairmans, I'm hoping that these transfers will go through smoothly, and I, and I know this is kind of new territory for both boards, and wondering whether the county attorney or somebody ought to take a look at exactly how these transfers ought to go. I know that it's ongoing and progress, but I, but, but several other divisions do it on a regular, on a fairly regular basis, so I'm sure there's a template out there that we can use, and I'd just be interested in knowing what that template is and how that, that goes. The second thing is just a comment about the $1.8 million renovation, and how does that balance against, you know, if you did that, how would that balance against a new building? Could you build a new building for that amount? I don't know.
You could, yes.
So, I know the renovation and the value of the building are all important considerations, but another consideration is, what would it cost to build that size building, you know, brand new from the ground up, so.
And we did go through that evaluation.
And I do appreciate y'all's, y'all's work, I'm, I'm, I think this is a, a good move for the county, and we've been good stewards of the facilities we have. Thank you.
For Ms. Carter, put on your tickler list his first idea, let's make sure the lawyers look at this thing before we ink it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, thank you both, appreciate it. Takes us to item four B, emergency radio communications. Mr. Voorhees, would you like to lead that discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Nolan, our Public Safety Communications Director's gonna lead us through the first several slides and then I'll wrap up.
Thank you, sir. Again, Thomas Nolan, Politeen 911 Director, and I promise I'll make this short and right to the point. Next slide, please, man. What direction is the county taking? The old way on the left is representative of some technology that we currently have. Technology worked well at one time, it's outdated and needs to be replaced, and many of the parts cannot be found, or if they are found, may not work properly. We are moving forward, we have a RFP out now, and we have responses from that, and moving to a new system that's called P-25, which is a platform that allows interoperability, an open platform for shared resources and shared opportunity between vendors, and that represents the type of equipment you see on the right side. Doesn't matter make, make or brand, it'll work, it's an open, open architecture. Next slide, please. What is interoperability? It's a buzzword that we often hear, it's a very important, it's an opportunity for us to work with each other along different voice, data, and video systems. In this case, the most important one is radio communications, common language is used, and home security also describes interoperability, a continuum designed to assist emergency response agencies and policymakers, and that's where we're here tonight, trying to determine how interoperability will work for us as we move forward in our new system. Next slide, please. There's different ways to plan for events for interoperability. We can take a large event, we can take localized emergencies, and those incidents where we have to make sure we open up a channel or talk groups, this system will allow us to do so. We have regional incidents, we'll work with our regional partners from Goochland or surrounding counties, Chesterfield, what have you. And of course, daily use, the daily use is important for managing resources and making sure we can respond to incidents out in the field as quickly as possible with the proper resources. Next slide, please. The components of a radio system, obviously on top, it's often called subscribers, these radios are very high-tech. If you look at, if you look at this way, these radios will last between 10, 15 years. I don't know if any computer or laptop you have, they take, lasts 10 or 15 years, but they're expensive. These radios will last under, could be submerged in water, I don't recommend it, it could be high heat, anything else, but the, the point is that they're, they're very, very expensive, but also they work well, they work for many years to come. They are computers, though. To the right, in that continuum there, is a tower facility. One of the things we have to do is when we build a, a new system, we have to prove our coverage, proven coverage requires towers. We, next slide, you'll see we have new towers proposed, an opportunity for us to fix our RF coverage, coverage we have currently today. Hardware in the back room, the hardware will be geodiverse on a new system, that system will, should we have a problem at one site, the other site will take over, that's very important should we have a tornado or any other significant event. If it continues on going that, around the circle there, that's equipment we'll have at the 911 Center. 911 Center will have the ability to communicate with others on different talk paths, and that talk pass and the trunking system is like an open channel, one-to-many, and that opportunity will be utilized by 911. The primary resources will be given to the PSO office and the fire EMS, but when we need to talk to groups like the schools, we can open up the channels and communicate quickly, instantly. And of course, Public Safety is showing the Public Safety Building there, and the renovations going on currently now, the 911 Center, which is in the back of there, back of the building. Next slide, please. This is actually a presentation we used as a proposed plan for master site, the blue dots represent new towers or county-owned towers. The size of circumference means the size of the tower, essentially what the blue, larger blue dots are, 400 foot. The one dot in the top-left corner represents a tower that we have opportunity to utilize from Verizon, and it's going to be a top 40 feet. Those, that particular area is underserved area, it's an area that we need to have, and it's something we're going to utilize, we're analyzing that, and most likely we'll use that. The other red dots are leased properties and/or proffered properties. Currently, our, this, this design is a lot different from what we currently have, and that's important when we look at maintenance in the future. Next slide, please. So, so what are our project goals? Our project goals are coverage that critical, is critical to the LMR project, to the safety in the public, the safety personnel and citizens we serve, maximize coverage over the county's geographic boundaries. Building penetration, this building here is a solid building, very thick building, takes a lot to get in this building, we plan on, we identified that, we identified critical buildings, including schools, courthouses, special emphasis in certain areas with economic zones. The cost is to minimize cost to the taxpayers and balance capital investment against ongoing lease payments. That's a balance between the leased towers, building new towers, that's why it's important, that's why we're proposing those new towers and at, at those locations. Next slide, please. And this, and I'm gonna talk about the first of, couple bullets here, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Voorhees.
Yeah, I just point out, Mr. Nolan had handed out an updated slide packet, so the one that's on the screen is the same as the one you have in your handout, which simplifies what, what he's trying to convey, so I just recommend you flip to that slide, basically the same information, but presented a little more clearly.
The VA system today, there's some assumptions we're making, if the school chooses to utilize the current VA system, what is it going to entail? What does it mean for the school system? It's an outdated system, as I stated earlier. Currently, we have a different service level contract that you can maintain or choose to alter, and we have a four-hour response, that doesn't mean, it would be four hours, most of the time it's an hour, and we also have sometimes immediate response, of course, verbal response. There's, most likely, we can maintain or obtain 75 mobile units, units that will be installed in the vehicle. The handheld units, has not been discussed yet, and that's something we can discuss in the future, should you decide you need those. The six towers design, only four are proffered, that, that means the other two are leased and have rental fees, and includes annual escalation of 5%. And that was, that breaks down into the chart you see below. What is it, what is the current maintenance? What if, well, the schools decide to take the VHS system and utilize that for their bus or transportation, whatever the needs they may choose. Current year, 19, it's about $88,000, and the escalation fee goes up from there. You can see it all the way to 2025. Really, I think it's self-explanatory, I don't know what else to say about that. This includes lease, response, batteries, generators, fuel, electricity, whatever else. Many of these towers, like I said, are not part of our new proposed plan, so that if you want to maintain those towers and keep the current VHS system going, that's what the schools or the county will be exposed to.
Mr. Voorhees, did you wanna add anything, sir?
I, I think what I'd like to do is have Tom talk about the next slide, and then I'll try to put it in a chewable bite for us.
All right.
Okay. So, again, if we look, take a look at the, let's take a look at the 780 megahertz system. What will happen here, in this situation, that we're proposing 120, my understanding, 120 unit count in the top chart will allow you to have all the transportation and then some. There's an opportunity to have handheld, my understanding, handheld is not as ideal, handheld will be an opportunity for them to put in a charger, have a, a mic system, however, it would not be secure, the person could take that unit out, and that may be hard for tracking purposes. The mobile provides a little bit better for $2,000 per unit, has opportunity to get a little farther reach, more power, antenna, it's a better system, probably most likely a better system for any type of vehicle, like the school bus or transportation. That cost comes out to $240,000. Right below it, there's a vendor install of 500, my, my understanding is, the schools may be able to entertain or opportunity for them to install themselves. When we go below, when we look below what the average cost would be, something I want to make sure everyone understands, the unit cost has not been determined, there is a significant increase in the maintenance of the new system. Interoperability is very important, I hope that everybody can opportunity join the system. This maintenance cost would be shared cost, that would be the county's, of course, however, there is an opportunity for us to show reflected costs per unit. 25 is projected, not hard-lined, it's not inked, in order, it's $35 per mobile, but if you take that at 4200, 120 units, you times that out, the first year in 2022 would be most likely the year we can actually go live with the new system, will be $50,400. Carry that up to 2026, and you can see the number of 261. I think when you, we compare those two different totals, I believe the opportunity to go on this new system, absent of the initial expense, is a better system, longer-lasting, and opportunity for better reaching and better interoperability.
Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if I could just summarize here what, what the key points are, we are getting off the VHF system, and we are more than happy to transfer that asset to the county. You're currently on, as I understand it, a VHF system, which may not be meeting your needs, and we believe the VHF system that we're currently using is better, but it's, one we're replacing, because it's not as good as it needs to be. So, you would be inheriting a system that we have already determined is not as, as good as, as we would like it to be, and as is at the end of its useful life, it is no longer supported by the manufacturer, and so to get parts and such, you're, you're really relegated to kind of the internet, you know, eBay-type approaches, or looking for other systems that may be upgrading and are willing to surplus. So, so there's the, the good side is, we, we'll give you a better system for free, but it's at the end of its useful life, and then you would need to pick up the whole cost of maintenance, because we would no longer be maintaining those sites and that equipment. And so, we're just trying to give the board a general concept of what that looks like, and as you can see from, from the first spreadsheet, you're looking at around $100,000 a year-type cost to, to maintain it. The good news is, there's no, there's low barrier to entry, because we're just giving it to you. The bad news is, it's $100,000 a year to maintain, and it's at the end of its useful life. We, we kinda thought that, that, that that might be acceptable, and because of the low cost of entry, better than what you have, and then got some inquiries about, well, wait a minute, what would it take for the schools to go on to the new system? Which, that's absolutely fine with us, and I think when it was specked, there was thought that we would wanna have capacity for the county for years to come, whether that included schools or any other department, we, we thought maybe the barrier to entry might be an issue, the cost. So, if you look at the second spreadsheet, that's the sort of round number, quarter of a million dollars, $240,000, give or take, with installation, would be the cost to get into the system of buying the, the actual subscriber units, mobiles or handhelds. We don't know if you need 120, you might need fewer, you might need more, but that's sort of the, the number we're chasing is, is to how do we get you those units? We have the, the funds to, to fund the county side, we might have enough money to add more, we might be able to contribute something, it remains to be seen, because we're still negotiating, we haven't even selected the final vendor, we've got two vendors that we're negotiating with. In addition, we don't know what the General Assembly might do with school safety money, this might be eligible for, for grants. We also can get creative over the next couple of years, we're not gonna be turning this thing on next year, it's gonna be a couple of years out, so my thought is, if, if we are aware of this issue, we look at grants, we look at our procurement, we look at a couple of years of budgeting, you know, maybe there's a way for us to, 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 to solve that, that cost barrier to access, because if you then go to the maintenance side, you would just be paying per unit a, a much lower subscriber fee, as we will be charging fire and police and what have you for, for general maintenance, and wouldn't have to worry about the system at all. The county will be taking care of that for everybody, and, and you'd have a much, much more robust system, which has a high degree of interoperability. That's one of the real exciting pieces, is you'd have your own suite of channels, you know, maybe every school has a channel, then maybe there's a transportation channel, then maybe there's an event channel, so if you're moving between schools, you can switch over. If we assign law enforcement or fire or rescue assets to a, an event, they all switch over to an event channel, and everybody's talking, and if you need to, you know, reach out beyond the event, you switch back over to the right agency and get them. And, and so that's, and the, and the voice quality is, is really, it's, it's excellent, it's excellent. So, we think there are a lot of reasons why we might want to, to look at having everybody go onto the new system, but we, we, we have that barrier to entry, and we just need to know about it, and then maybe over the next couple of budgets, figure out how we can, can make, solve that problem and, and move to having this all on a, on a really excellent system.
All right, Dr. Jones, would you like to make any comments before we open up questions from the board members?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we've had a few meetings where we've discussed these different options, and we appreciate the county reaching out to us and making an offer of the VHSF materials, and we talked about the new system and bringing that on. We have not done any analysis at this point in terms of how many units we would actually need, it was more of a, this is the worst-case scenario of 120 units, would be probably, that would put one on every bus and in the hand of every administrator in every building. Do we necessarily need that many units? Maybe, maybe not, so we would have to analyze that, but we wanted, I wanted the school board to hear this information from Tom, because he's the expert, and he knows this better than anybody on my staff knows, so we wanted you to hear what the benefits are, what the costs are, and then we can have subsequent conversations about what direction the school board wishes to take on this matter. I, I don't anticipate that the VHF, using the obsolete equipment is gonna be an option, so we have some time to, to discuss that, and even in terms of budget preparations, if we're not looking until a 2022 start date. So, this is really just the first information, you'll receive more detailed information about this topic, once we've had a chance to look at what our actual needs are and what the best uses would be.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. Questions or comments from members of either board? Mr. Chairman, sir.
Dr. Jones, who on your staff is a subject matter expert in this field?
So, Dr. Tibbs is getting up to speed on that, we also have Jeff Dorrett, who works with our radios and cameras and those types of things now, who we've asked to go and do some of that, but we've also, you know, we'll talk to Tom and call him and get information about that as well. We have ample communication right now for our everyday use, the question's gonna be, what do we need for emergency situations to be able to communicate with our partners in, you know, law enforcement, fire, and rescue, those types of things, and what level of penetration do we need that? Is it, is it necessary for us to have one in the hands of everybody, or can we look at other options? So, those are some of the questions that we're asking.
I think I speak for the Board of Supervisors in saying that we will make Tom and his expertise available to you and your staff as you noodle these issues and come to some decision, so please don't feel embarrassed to ask.
Appreciate that. We will not, and we've already called on him several times for some in-depth meetings to try and get a better handle on this, so we appreciate that offer, and we'll definitely use that resource.
Don't you love it, Tom, from not giving you another job?
Yes, sir.
For a fee, right, Tom?
Mr. Huckins, sir.
Yeah, I, I don't recall ever seeing any numbers approaching this $100,000 yearly maintenance for the system that we, that we currently have, but I think that, you know, just from my two cents, probably the most important issue that we would have is coverage, and I know you talked about coverage in the county, but we would need to, for our vehicles to be able to communicate wherever they are on the roads, and that would, you know, dovetail in with all the studies that have done in implementing the new system, so, you know, all I have to say is I think that we should leapfrog over the obsolete technology and get on board with what is at least gonna carry us for the next five to 10 years. It certainly seems like the, the yearly costs are, are far less, and you don't know what's gonna happen in, in five years to that $100,000 number, that, that could go up significantly, so that's just my two cents. So that's just my two cents.
Just a point of interest though, we, we hope this next system will last at least fifteen to twenty, replacing out the static cost in that.
All right. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Emel.
I agree with Dr. Jones and Mr. Conca. I think that we do need to have the updated system for the emergency. God forbid we have a disaster or an incident and we need to be in contact as Mr. Voorhees has said, we would switch it and then we would all be on the same, what do you call it? Frequency. And that's what we would need if we did have a disaster. So nobody wants to look that way, but we've got to look that way. And I think that, that's the best thing to do is to go with the newer stuff with you and see if we can't get grants or whatever. But I would feel much more comfortable that I was protecting the students and teachers and staff in our schools with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Norby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
You and I have talked about these kinds of things before, but I want to just ask kind of a general question and then get with a specific example. Interoperability is the thing. I happen to sit on the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission and we represent nine localities centered around Richmond City. So, you know, Chesterfield, we have Goochlin, we have, you know, Henrico, et cetera. We have looked at this particular issue. With this new system, would we very easily be able to talk to Chesterfield County, Goochlin County, Amelia County, Cumberland? The last two I mentioned are not in our Planning District Commission. So I'm kind of wondering, what does this look like with all the counties that touch our borders?
Yes, sir. Chesterfield and Goochlin County will be the probably easiest path to go ahead and get some talk groups that will work on our single band system. There's different frequencies and different bands and within UHF, VHF and of course seven hundred, eight hundred. Opportunity for us to get tri-band radios or quad-band depending what the terminology would like to use. One vendor calls it quad, one calls it tri. Essentially the same thing, seven hundred, eight hundred, sometimes consider a single band. We'll have an opportunity with tri-band radios to communicate, at least the public safety people will have that tri-band radio to communicate with Cumberland directly should they choose to and/or Amelia.
Okay.
And then Goochlin and Chesterfield already have seven hundred, eight hundred.
And that's important because we don't have a hospital in this county.
That's correct.
So Chesterfield, we'd be leaning heavily on them in, in the event we need that.
The mobile coverage, one of the, one of the applications we also have the opportunity to utilize in addition to the mobile coverage which will, which will be significant, allowing us to go a lot further than we currently go today outside the borders, will be the app that the vendors are offering through a phone app, through LTE connection. And that connection will allow you to tap into a gateway into the new seven hundred, eight hundred system. So we have another option as well.
So let me ask a specific scenario. Actually with, when Ms. Emel was talking about it, it kind of reminded me, in the district I serve, we've had, I believe, three tornadoes in the last 12 months or so. A couple actually touched and one of them did not, as far as I know. It was behind Tractor Supply Center. It was not that far from the schools and I think they held the buses and had everybody go back inside that day. I, I hate to think about it as being a reality, but had that tornado, which was only hundreds of yards away from the high school, had it hit the high school and there were people injured and significant damage, what does it look like with the old system and what does it look like with the new if we needed help from, say Chesterfield County, you know, in a big way? You know, two cans in a string versus this, you know, Whopper thing? What does that look like? What's the difference?
The VHF system would be difficult to, the Chesterfield units or Goochlin units would have to be, we would have to try to patch them from the Chesterfield side and that would be difficult to do so, but it could be done. The patch would have to be on their side. We don't have the technology. If they, if we had seven hundred, eight hundred, it'd be a lot easier bringing resources in because we allow them to have our talk groups. All they would do is switch over, respond, come right in and we can work together seamlessly.
When you're doing the patches, is there, is there like a time element and a possibility of confusion there?
Oh, absolutely. Sure. It's an opportunity for us to not get the right resource on the right channel and people could be confused. If you have an opportunity to have the seven hundred, eight hundred system, people will know immediately where to go to or we can push them there.
Okay. Thanks. And last real quick question, can we get that robotics team that won the award? Can we get them to build this system? Any chance? I'm just looking for ways to save a buck.
Anything to reduce the cost? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Yes, sir.
All right. Other questions or comments? Last, I've got one question. Mr. Voorhees.
I just wanted to make a comment. Having deployed these systems in some other communities, I do want to make it clear that if, if we, if we go with, with, you know, all of us on, on the system, the technology will be there that allows us to communicate in an interoperable situation across multiple boundaries and multiple agencies. One of the keys will be is for us to not forget that, that practice of the procedures necessary to get on the right talk group so that people know where we're going and how to get there will be really key. Because in the heat of the moment, you know, you're, you're going to default to what you know best. And so I just want to put that out there for everybody. If you're in law enforcement, you're working on your channels. You're in fire and rescue, you're working on your channels. Those two agencies do work together some, but schools probably won't and public works probably won't. And you'll have the briefing, you know, at the beginning of all this where, hey, if we have a disaster, everybody go to, you know, whatever talk group and some people will forget that. And then the, the big, bad, horrible will happen and, and people won't know what to do. So that's just a lesson for everybody, that training together, to, you know, you train like you, you fight, the army, or you practice like you play, the football team might say that. It's important that we get into the practice as a community because we do work well together, but those specific procedures in an emergency management situation, that's why we do those drills.
And we...
I'm sorry, Ms. Emel, please.
Well, we practice all those lockdown and fire and I think we would just, couldn't we just add a community-wide one into those drills? Thank you.
So I'll take the privilege and I've got a couple of quick questions for you first. So are you describing a model whereby the county would own, sort of on one set of radios and the school board would own another set of radios that would operate on the same system?
Yes, because the radios we're proposing for the seven hundred, eight hundred system are outstanding radios. They are radios that we could use in the public safety realm, the ones we're going to get a little bit, have more feature sets.
All right. And this is not a question as much as it is a statement, I think. I would really, and I know we're in a very early stage, but, but I would really ask that the two staffs think about this a little bit. We share a joint transportation facility where we work on vehicles from both sides, the county and the schools. You, you and your staff are experts in radios and communications. The school side, we're, we're education. I think it's a nice model that you presented. It seems to make very good sense. But is there a way for us to think about this in terms of the county owning a set of radios that serve both groups of our government with, with the infrastructure there? And, you know, we, we lay this out about what the cost will be to the schools, but the reality of that is going to be, we're going to put this into a budget allocation or a budget request if we choose to do that, put it to the board of supervisors who's going to decide with the same pot of money whether they're going to fund it or not. It would seem this would be something that would be right to talk about in terms of a shared model about how we approach this if the staff decides that the, the staff led by the board, the school board decides it's a direction we want to go for the schools.
I think what you're describing, sir, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I support that completely and totally.
Yes, sir. Understood.
I think what Mr. Voorhees mentioned earlier to me in our conversations about this interoperability was the opportunity to do something very simple, we described as a proposal, which we would have a shop that'll allow us to do some immediate fixes and get the person who has that cracked screen, antenna issue, loose wire, whatever it may be, or even installation. You saw that five hundred dollars could be significant over time. If that's something we can break out of the contract, we can definitely reduce some of the cost in the maintenance.
Okay. If that could be part of the discussion, I would appreciate that.
I think that's a great idea. Shared resources. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. We'll bring, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Tom, I know that we often take our professionals for granted, not because we're trying to, but because we're so busy in the busyness. And I want you to know how much we appreciate not only the expertise that you bring to bear on these questions, but the zeal with which you present them. It means a great deal to us to be convinced that you believe in what you're saying and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Next item on our agenda is item 4C, the replacement process of our financial system. Dr. Jones, Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you very much. So I'd like our IT Director, John Wood, to step up here and we're going to talk a little bit about core financial systems which have been identified by the acronym, the unwieldy and unsexy acronym ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning. I don't know where that term came from, but some, somebody maybe from IBM, I don't, came up with this term to be the, the core financial systems and how it integrates with our human resources, our accounts payable, accounts receivable. So if you hear the term ERP, I'm talking about your core financial systems. We're running on a system that is referred to as sort of by two names, either BAI or Bright. And it's the, the most popular local government software package for doing core financials. It runs on a significantly bypassed or, or older system and many, many local jurisdictions are transitioning away from it. John, I don't know if you have any of your slides available. I think we, we're down a clerk in our office, so weren't able to get some of our materials to this meeting, but John, do you have that? Mind if you, okay, great.
Yes.
I think the slide that's the third one down is really telling. You want to talk about that for a second?
Sure. Thank you. So this is just some of our market research essentially we've gone through and this is not, this is not guaranteed to be accurate. This is just from email exchanges, other conversations that I've had that vendors have told me about. So I can't say for a hundred percent certain that this is all of the counties or localities in Virginia that are engaged in an ERP changeover, but I do know that at least the ones highlighted in red have in the last five years started the process or completed the process of changing their core financial system. It could be for school or county or both in this case.
So we've been working on a process to jointly look at the opportunities that an ERP replacement might present us and we think that there are potential economies of scale. We know that the schools may have some things that you'd like to, to look at a little differently. We know there's a big trend towards cloud services. Certainly there, there are feature sets that the public expects more of now, ability to pay bills online or on their mobile devices, us being able to pay vendors differently, being able to report, to have much more transparent reporting for our public. A lot of these things are very difficult to achieve in our current system. And so sort of cutting to the chase, we'd like to go down a path jointly to see if we can move us to a modern platform with modern architecture and, and save by doing it together. And I'm, I'm aware that we have a little bit more to go on the agenda and only 61 minutes till the hokeys and wahoos tip off. So John had prepared a much more detailed presentation, but cutting to the chase, we'd like to go together down a path where we then get to some decision points and, and at those points decide whether both parties' interests are being met. If so, keep going and maybe get to a joint procurement. If at any point folks think that they're not getting where they need to go, we can separate and go our separate ways with no harm, no foul. Both of our systems work at different levels of functionality. They're different systems altogether. We do know our staff struggle sometimes in reconciling the two different systems. They certainly don't talk to each other directly, so we have to do a lot of manual work and send, you know, reports by spreadsheet and email. Some of our peers are doing it by being on the same platform. So that's what this is about and we're at the early stages developing a, a team of representatives to, to govern this project and we just wanted to make you all aware of it. We have a lot more details in the presentation, like I said, in the interest of time. John's much more entertaining than I am too, so I regret that I usurped his opportunity.
All right. Questions for Mr. Voorhees? Dr. Jones, do you have anything to add before that?
I think Mr. Voorhees handled it well. I think there's certainly some benefits on us going down this path together until we reach a decision point that, you know, we may decide it's not in our, both of our interests to move forward on one platform. I think best case scenario would be, but I think we also have to factor in that switching over ERP systems takes a lot of work, a lot of manpower, a lot of time, and I think that has to be part of the consideration as well.
All right. I think we move through it rather quickly. Are there questions or comments?
It sounds like a great avenue to explore. I think Dr. Jones is right. It's a cost benefit analysis basically, you know, is it going to benefit the county and benefit the school system go this way? I certainly do echo Mr. Voorhees' comment about ease of use. You know, that's one of the things parents often ask me about is when are we going to go to a system where I can pay things online at the school and I'm sure, and it'd be awful nice to pay my property taxes online without a huge fee too. So, you know, I'm interested in doing this. I think, I'm looking forward to the results down the road.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gold. Other questions or comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move to item 4D, Budget Early Revenue Forecast.
I think Mr. Johns is going to come up and kind of take us through this information and for the school board's benefit, Mr. Johns did prepare a couple of slides that you can review at your, at your leisure if you haven't had a chance yet about the ERP changeover from our perspective. Kind of mirrors what we talked about, but we'll move forward to what we have so far on budget and early revenue forecasts.
This particular one is the county slide. Mr. Voorhees, I don't know if you wanted to make any comments on that or, I do have the key number from the school board on my slide, so.
I think the only comment I would just make is generally about the state budget situation. I think we know that the, the federal tax changes are now rolling downhill to the states and the, the issue of conformity will be one of the most important topics for the General Assembly to tackle and, and they're going to have to tackle that in a short session. So they really only have, you know, 30 days or so to kind of get their arms around that. Conformity is generally the idea of having all the deductions and write-offs that the federal government allows be mirrored in state code so that folks know what sort of deductions to take so they can calculate what they're going to pay. And as it stands now, we, we haven't made those changes in Virginia. So the, the result would be that the state would receive a significant windfall in revenue if nothing is done. So at this point, the, the governor has proposed some conformity changes that would result in certain tax cuts, if you will, to certain parts of the population, but then also keep some of that revenue for a number of his priorities, some of which would be teacher pay, change to some of the funding levels of the SOQ, some perhaps broadband initiatives, some perhaps transportation initiatives, some Medicaid expansion costs and those sorts of things. The leadership in the House, which is where the revenue bills, the tax bills, you know, get decided, has a little different view of what to do. And I think that they've expressed an interest in having the tax cuts be bigger and spread across a, a larger number of citizens and be more in line with the federal code to have essentially pure conformity or, or more exact conformity. So we don't know quite where that's going to shake out. I think... conformity. So, we don't know quite where that's going to shake out. I think the good news is that either way, on that scale, it doesn't look like we're going to have cuts to local transfers. We, one way we might have more expansion, the other way we might have more sort of, kind of parity with prior years. So, that's the good news, is that it's not going the wrong way. It could go the right way for funding some of your needs. So, that's the only comment I would want to make. We haven't had significant revenue growth on our tax base. The sort of ballpark numbers, about half of what last year yielded. I think last year we were able to, early in the process, share or give you a number of $700,000 plus in additional revenue from our tax growth, real estate tax growth. Now it looks closer to a little over $300,000. It's not an assessment year, so that's really just from new development. So, not quite as much to, you know, play with, but the good news is we don't think we're going to have significant state cuts.
Page four on the next slide. Go ahead and go to page four. As far as the school is concerned, we've looked at what the governor has presented in his proposed budget, and for Palitan, for FY2020, it would be an increase of just over $1 million, $1,180,000. He's included in his proposed budget a 5% raise for teachers, and of that $1 million, $709,000 of it relates to a compensation supplement for a 5% raise. If you look at the cost of a 5% raise to include benefits for all of our staff, you're looking at $1,655,000. There's, in the governor's proposed budget, there's also an additional guidance counselor for Palitan, so the cost of those two items is 1.7 million. So, if you look at the additional million versus the 1.7 million dollar cost, you've got a $687,000 shortfall. If you add to that the proposed increased revenue from the county of $300,000, you're still about a $400,000 shortfall just on those items. And, you know, to really echo what Mr. Voorhees said, this is a proposed budget, and it'll be mid-February when crossover occurs and we get to know what the House and the Senate is proposing. So, but for discussion purposes and for us to start thinking about it, these are good numbers to look at. I do want to add, in regards to the 5% proposed raise, however that comes out, whether it's 5%, 3%, or whatever, several members of the House and Senate have already expressed the fact that most likely the language that would be included in the appropriation budget would provide the leeway for whatever the school division has already done this year in meeting an increase, that we could get the benefit of that. So, say, for example, they do, the governor's proposal wins out, and it does have 5% language in there, then we would not necessarily have to do 5% because we've done some this year, and we could count that towards the supplement. They've had similar language in prior budgets, so would expect to have that language in this one as well. If the 5% does get decreased, I believe that the $709,000 supplement would get decreased as well. But at this stage, it's just too early to know. Questions?
All right, questions for Mr. Johns, members of either board?
Very quickly.
Mr. Norvig, sir.
Hi, Larry. Just very quickly, so do you have a Plan A and a Plan B, both parallel, ready to go, and then you get word from the state and we activate one or the other? How does that work? Because sometimes they give us not very much notice, you know, when budget season, and we have to sign, we have to appropriate money at the beginning of May because we have teacher contracts, of course. So, on the school side, we have to act first week of May.
Not yet, but we will. And what we've always done in the past is, once we've gotten, after crossover, and we get the House and Senate proposal, as well as the governor's proposal, we'll look at the worst-case and best-case scenario to make sure we do have a plan to meet the worst-case or best-case. And so, we don't have that yet because we don't have the House and Senate, but we will do that, as we have in the past.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Johns.
Yes, sir.
Texas, item 4E, capital improvement projects closeout.
Mr. Johns is going to handle this item as well.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Johns?
Would you bring that slide back up? Basically, there are two slides on this. One is for the middle school project, the new Palitan Middle School project, and as of December 31st, our unspent balance at that time was just over $400,000. When we look at the amount that we still owe the contractor, the retainage, some monies owed to the architect, and some outstanding orders and contingency in case some additional things come up, we're looking at an unspent balance of about $226,000 on that project. We're anticipating the completion of this project to finish in May. That means that we'll be signing off on the final punch list with the contractor, and then school finance and county finance reviewing and balancing out again, as we are doing monthly anyway, to make sure we've got everything covered, and at that point in time, we would close this project, and those remaining funds would be available for use elsewhere.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions or comments from members of either board?
So, tell me.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, Mr. Governor.
No, sir.
What is the projected remainder?
$226,000 at this time.
But that's not, you're not sure of that until all the bills are in and paid? Is that the point?
That is the point, but we're close to being done with this, and so, some of these numbers, I have the bills, I know exactly what it's going to be. The amount that is not known is the $30,000 contingency that's in there. So, if there are no other contingencies, anything else come up, then instead of 226, it could be 256 left over.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just make the point to, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that as much as we'd all like to think about what else we could do with those funds, what's likely to need to happen is for us to use that to make the initial debt service payment that we need to make for the new financing that we just did, because we went ahead and scheduled that to have a debt service payment in the first year, and we don't have funds identified right off the bat for that.
Well, that's where I was, actually, where I was going with that. So, we don't know what that figure is, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 200.
I think, I think 226 is worst-case scenario. We've completed all of our orders. We've, we're not buying anything else. We've identified what our needs are. We've gone through all the major punch list items. We know what we owe the contractor and the architect. We're just making sure we're going through what the final check, and that's why we have that contingency set aside. I don't think it will be lower than that 226 number.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. Members of the Board of Supervisors, I'll take the opportunity. We commended the staff, Mr. Johns, Dr. Tibbs, prior to them, Mr. Wilson, on their work on these two very major projects for us over this period of time, and I'll do it again with you present as well. We appreciate the fact that they completed both projects on time and under budget, and we certainly appreciate them being good stewards of our county taxpayer money and the school board. We have diligently worked with them to do that, and I just want to take, again, this moment to thank you and Dr. Jones and all of your staff. We appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Good job.
Yes, sir. All right, so following our printed agenda this evening, the next item is item 4F, transportation, bus rides over one hour. Mr. Johns, that may be you as well, sir.
It is. Just to make one comment on the closeout of the transportation facility.
I apologize, sir, please.
We're looking at about $41,000 to be left over there on that project, so that would be combined with the 226 and available. We will complete that one in March, and so we'll know that number in March.
All right, so I ended him, or completed his presentation prematurely for him. Any questions about either of those two topics before we move to the next item?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Congress, sir.
Do we have contingency funds held from the contractor for a period greater than what you specify for leaks and things that might crop up during, you know, a warranty period?
Once we complete the punch order, I do not believe that there is a plan with this, either of these projects, to still hold back. I mean, we still have retainage, and we won't pay that retainage until we are satisfied with the punch list and everything.
And what's the amount of the retainages is what I'm looking at for, you know, until everything's paid, we're holding back something. You're calling it retainage. What is that?
Right, and the retainage that we're holding back on the, on the transportation facility, that amount that I have owed to the contractor is a final payment and includes retainage, and so does the one on the, the retainage is also included, that $43,000 on PMS, that's just retainage.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Further questions or comments about the presentation?
Just one question.
Mr. Cole, sir.
I know there was some discussion when the water tower did not finish on time about there being some penalty. Was that, was that all, was that done, or was there any, is that included in here or not?
That's not in here. The water tower is a separate CIP project for the county, and even though some of the work that the contractor did on the transportation facility, as well as the architect, each time we paid those bills, the piece that related to the water tower was paid out of a different bucket, so it's not included in the numbers.
We carried it over there for a long time, so, but I just wondered what happened. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, item 4F, transportation, bus rides over one hour.
Okay. We had completed, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question. We had presented a complete report to the school board in September 25th, and I believe that that full report was made available to the supervisors as well. But, just to go over a couple of the high points of that report, the mission of transportation is to provide safe and efficient transportation, and those are the things that DOE will evaluate on us when they do their inspections. But as an internal goal, we have, and have for years, looked at any of our routes that are running over an hour, and as a customer service benefit, try and review those and make some adjustments to get them under an hour, if we can do that and it's reasonably efficient. When we did the report to the school board back in September, we had seven routes that, on average, most days they exceeded an hour, and they were anywhere from an hour and five minutes to maybe an hour and 20 minutes. Since then, we've continued to review this, and we've reassigned some stops. We've adjusted the afternoon bus lineups at dismissal times to try and reduce the time, hired another driver and split one route, and at this point in time, we still have about five routes that, on average, exceed an hour. And again, the worst case on some of those is an hour and 20 minutes, but then there are days that some of those will actually make an hour or less. Right now, we have a whole lot of athletic field trips going on, and so, some of these routes are running less time because you have some students that are not riding the bus to go home because they're on a field trip. And at this point in time, the five that we still have that, on average, exceed an hour, we anticipate that that's the way we're going to finish this year. They're going to remain over an hour, and it's simply because some of these routes are running like 39 or 40 miles, and based upon the distance from the home to the school, and those five are all high school routes. The high school is located more to the eastern end of the county instead of central. So, that's what it is. You know, it's not really anything else. I mean, we'll continue monitoring, but there's not really anything else that we can do at this point.
Right.
Dr. Johnson?
Yep, and we'll continue to do the steps that we've done, and we're continuing to recruit bus drivers and look at how we're using our current fleet. So, we're not stopping what we're doing. We're going to continue to look at this issue and make sure that if there are adjustments that we can make, that we'll continue to make throughout the year.
Mr. Johnson?
So, the standard that we've set, that you set for yourselves is one hour? Is that what your target is, not more than?
That's the internal goal, yes, sir.
And is that, is that ours as a community, or is that a recognized standard nationally? Or where did that number come from? Is this our intent?
Just internal here. It's not, there is no requirement for DOE at all, and it deals with time. What DOE looks at is the efficiency and the safety, and that's it. There's not a time guideline. That's just an internal thing that we've used for years as a customer service, you know, idea to the community.
So, do you have every, I mean, is there, is there a bar graph or something that shows 10% or 15 minutes, 20% or 30 minutes, 2% or an hour or more? Do you have that?
I have a, an Excel file that has the time for every bus, but I've not set it up into a chart like that.
It seems like two hours a day is a lot of time for kids to be away from home and away from school, but it's a, it's a new idea for me. It just, it just feels to me that that's too much, and I know that's why you're trying to tackle it, but it's going to come down to buses, fuel, and drivers.
It does, because if we, for example, split a route, you know, we have to hire a driver, and then that's one more bus that we have to maintain and fuel. And these are 65-passenger buses, and for the most part, they're not running full. And so, even some of these that are over an hour, when you look at the distance and the number of stops, they may only have 20, 25 kids on them. And so, to split that route, it just is, you know, not economically feasible, but, you know, we are concerned about the length of time, and that's why we, you know, look at that and do, you know, make adjustments as we can to that.
Mr. Norvig, sir.
Do I go first, Jim? No, you.
Mr. Norvig.
I know more than just myself are concerned about this issue, but when they were asking for suggestions on what could be on the agenda, this was one of my suggestions. It came from when I was attending a school board meeting, just sitting in the peanut gallery. This issue came up and sparked a discussion, and rightly so. I was actually quite shocked to find out that the initial times, some of them were almost an hour and a half, and I know once the school year starts and you see who's actually riding the bus, those times come down. Still, an hour 15, hour 20, students spending two and a half hours of their day on a bus doesn't seem too conducive to education. I know it's difficult. I know this is a tough one to solve. I have an airline background. The airlines fix this problem this way. For small cities that really don't warrant a 757 or something that holds 300 people, they've got little commuter jets, used to be props. They would fly those smaller ones into a collector point, a hub, and then the larger ones would take those people to Chicago or Miami or whatever. Works really well, and most every airline that's large uses that system. It's called a hub and spoke. So, is this a possibility that students that live down, let's say toward Tobacco Ville or up in the northwest corner of the county, and they have to get all the way to the high school, could we get the small-sized buses, or even 12 or 15-passenger vans, to run simultaneously? to run simultaneously routes with smaller numbers of students to a collector point somewhere near five twenty-two and sixty, say, and then run a big bus or two with those students to the high school? That would be less time. I don't know if it's more efficient. I watch the pennies pretty carefully at budget time. I think most people know that. I'd be willing to look at spending more money to get a shorter ride for those kids. So comment?
A comment on, I'm not sure how the smaller buses and then going to a pickup point really is going to decrease it. However, the point of a smaller bus would just save money in the cost of the bus. There's an incremental cost when you go from, say, a, you know, forty-five passenger, sixty-five passenger, that kind of stuff. That's not a big difference, but there is an incremental cost. There is one thing I would like to consider, vans. However, if you have a vehicle that is stopping on the road to pick up students, it must be yellow. It must be all of the, you know, lights and stop sign and everything else that a school bus has. And what this issue is all about is that a school bus or yellow van, when you're out on Route sixty and the speed limit's fifty-five and they've got kids on it, forty-five is the max that they can go. When you start looking at the number of stops, and let's take a thirty-nine or forty-mile drive from the first student's house in the far western end of the county to the high school, and the stops and the turnarounds and cul-de-sacs and those type of things that a vehicle has to make, and you may have twenty stops added into that, there's just mathematically, you can't do it in an hour. And so that's the frustration that we went through when we, in the presentation in September, looked at, you know, all of this. Because when you first look at it and say, hey, it's only twenty miles, why can't you make it in an hour? But when you start adding in the stops and the turnarounds and the speed limitations with the bus, that's where you get to the hour and twenty minutes.
Let me just clarify real quick. Let's take a scenario where we have one big bus going to neighborhood A and next door neighborhood B and maybe neighborhood whatever, but neighborhood A and B, and they're making all those stops and making all those turnarounds, and then they go to the school. If you had two smaller buses, one doing neighborhood A and one doing neighborhood B simultaneously, then going to a common point and bussing them in, that would be less time. I'm not, you know, a total of both buses would be the same or whatever, but on the clock, you'd get there quicker. That's kind of my point. Not, well, I won't believe it, but there you go. So have we considered other out-of-the-box ideas?
Well, we have made changes and moved some students from one bus to another bus, and those are the type of adjustments that we've made. But in some of the, and you have to look at each route and how you address each route is, you know, can be different. And so we look at the route, and if it is a, if we have another route that crosses over or is nearby where we can move a few students from one to another, we've done that. And that is one of the adjustments.
I think we'll continue to study this issue and take Mr. Nordvig's approach and take a look at it. And we'll be happy to bring back a budget number of what it would cost for us to get all routes under an hour. I think the other pertinent information would be is to look at similar districts as ours and see what their ride times are. I would hazard a guess, just from being with some of them, that there are very few rural counties of similar size to us that don't have routes over an hour each way. So, but we'll be happy to bring that information back to the school board and share that with the board of supervisors and get a budget number of what it would cost to get all of our buses under an hour.
All right, other questions or comments? Mr. Congress.
My initial comment was very similar to Mr. Nordvig. It's kind of a, I don't know what to call it, the hub and spoke concept. But I think that the only thing that is going to truly affect this, you know, besides money and staff and buses, is if you were to reduce the number of stops. And that would put the, you know, put it on the parents to say, you know, this group of homes has to go to a common collector point. And then, you know, that's, it's still transportation time. I probably fly more than you do these days. And it doesn't matter, you know, whether you got one stop, two stop, you still got travel time. And so they'd have travel time in their own vehicle or a friend's vehicle to a stop. They'd have the wait time for the bus, and they would have the travel time from the bus to the school. You might be able to reduce that bus ride under an hour, but you're still probably going to have an hour and fifteen minutes for each individual student. But, you know, reducing the number of stops to me is the only way that you're going to significantly impact it.
And that would help.
And I think that there's just going to be some that are going to have to be longer.
All right, other questions or comments? Mrs. Eamol?
I brought this issue up in August because I represent District Five, and many parents are very upset about how long it takes their children to get to school, specifically high school. I have been working with Dr. Jones and Mrs. Gualtney to give out-of-the-box ideas because I really think we need to look at this differently. I know on some of those routes, they are picking up out west, but they should come directly down sixty and go to the high school. Some of those routes are stopping at subdivisions and going in closer to the school. And I think that that's a problem. And that's where you will, if you use the bus out west to get the people in and then see what can be done about those other pickup stops that are closer to the school. Also, as Dr. Jones says, we've been working on this. I know we were working on that one bus that had only nine students. Did we, you know, trying to find out if those students can be split up, and then we've got a free driver and a free bus to go to the high school route. So before we start spending all this money and for more buses and more drivers, et cetera, I really think we need to look at the whole county and perhaps a committee of small, a small number of people to sit down. It's not something I can see that we can do during the year because you're going to disrupt all of the students and all of the parents right now. But it is something that we could talk about and make some decisions about so that it could be changed for the next year. Because that's when you have to make the decisions, not during the year, without disrupting the entire system. So I am more than happy to help with this. I just, I really think we need to look and use the taxpayers' money and carefully and look and see what other out-of-the-box ideas we can come up with before we start throwing out more money. Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
I think it's clear we have a challenge. And the school board, as Mrs. Eamol said, we have been addressing this issue just this school year. Since at least August, we've been having these conversations. It's been clear to me at least that the intent of the school board is that the bus rides will be less than an hour. That is absolutely our goal for the reasons that the members of the board of supervisors have cited this evening. And I mean, I think we're continuing to try to do that. But I would say that I appreciate the engagement from the board of supervisors in the issue. I think Mr. Nordvig pointed out that he heard that at one of our meetings earlier in the year, and their willingness to take a look at the issue, to talk about it, I think is important. I think it's important that we collaborate on issues like this because I will tell you, this is one of the issues I've gotten the most calls about over the past couple of months, is parents concerned about the bus rides, the length of time. And it impacts my district as well, District Four. So probably yours and mine are the two that are most impacted. But unless there are further questions or comments, we can move to the next item. All right, that takes us to item four G. And Dr. Jones or Mr. Voorhees, whichever of you would like to move us through that particular item.
Oh, yeah. The school board had expressed the desire to have meeting dates on the calendar for the year. So those dates have been selected, or, excuse me, have been proposed by Mr. Voorhees and myself. March eighteenth, which would be budget presentation from the school board to the board of supervisors, and then September twelfth and December twelfth is the other meeting date scheduled ahead of time. We did include those on the school board calendar that was approved earlier this evening, but wanted to see if there's any discussion or issues with those dates before we set them in stone.
Do we need a motion?
All right. Mr. Nord, I'll finish this if you want, and then I'll turn it back over to you. Mr. Nordvig, sir.
We've only got three members still.
Yeah, that's cool.
Do we commit? Were two people missing? I'm just asking.
Yeah, we can.
You can always change them if you need.
And we did share this with the board, and I didn't get any negative feedback. The board's already got March eighteenth down as a budget workshop night. The other two dates are, would be additional dates. But so far, I haven't heard any concerns from members of the board of supervisors with those dates.
The school board approved it earlier in the evening in our calendar.
So somebody make a motion?
So moved.
A second. Ms. Cowell, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye, we've got a schedule.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you want to take that over for the public comment period?
We're now at our second public comment period. If you wish to address this board, either one of these boards, on any item, please come forward. Not seeing anyone, we close the second public comment period. Board of supervisors have any comments?
I have one. I am proud of what these two boards have tried to do over the course of the last year of coming together and working together to make things happen. I think it's educational for all of us. It raises our awareness of what the other board is struggling with, and it gives each of us another set of lenses to see the world, particularly the financial world and our tax world. It helps us understand why the school board is asking for what it's asking. It puts it in context, and I think it's very helpful to us. I'm very proud of what we're trying to do. Any other comments from the board of supervisors? Any comments from the school board? Any comments? I'm sorry, yes.
I just wanted to say that the MLK Youth Day Breakfast is this Monday at the high school at eight AM. And we have sixteen seniors from the high school that applied for our three scholarships, and one of which is from two of our board of supervisors, Carson Tucker and Bill Milton. And also, our superintendent, Dr. Jones, will be the recipient of the Community Award this year. So I hope you can all come. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any comments from the superintendent?
No, sir.
From the county administrator?
Only to echo, Mr. Chairman, your comments. It's been a pleasure working with Dr. Jones and his team. The sense of cooperation is really, you know, in this time when maybe other levels of government struggle to find common ground, it's been very heartening to work to common purpose here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion from the members of the board of supervisors to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
So done, we're adjourned.
All right, motion from the school board to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
We're going to adjourn.
No, we need to adjourn this meeting and move back to the next meeting. So a motion to adjourn this meeting. We have a motion, is there a second?
Okay, second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment, please respond with aye.
Aye.
There is no opposition, we stand adjourned. All right, so the school board, if you keep your seats, and what we need to do after the board of supervisors leave is reconvene to our previous meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, what is his name? Jimmy, excuse me. Can you hook me up here, please? I'm kind of a dead battery.
Now we're holding you hostage.
If, for the school staff, if DLT members could stay just for the other items on the agenda, but if the rest of the staff would like to leave and have a good evening, feel free to. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have to do this.
All right. All right, so do we have a motion from the school board to reconvene to the school board meeting of January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen?
So moved.
All right, thank you. And we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. So the school board is back in session for our January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen school board meeting. Next item on our agenda is our closed session, item five. Mr. Cole, could I ask you, please?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to make a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one to discuss the employment resignation and leave of specific employees, and pursuant to code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two and A four to discuss expulsion and school placement of specific students. That is code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, A two, and A four.
Mr. Cole's made a motion for us to enter into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are in closed session.
Question out at Pocahontas Elementary. The PLC, it said, in, under the calendar, it said reading PLC and STEM PLC and behavior PLC and...
Reference to the principal's report?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, excuse me. Uh huh.
So PLCs are professional learning committees? So those are teachers that are learning professionally about those different topics. They usually meet during their planning period or before or after school.
Oh, okay, thank you. And then one said relationship mapping. This is all in the calendar, and it said January thirty-first, relationship mapping. What's that about?
I don't know. Dr. Thomas, do you have?
I don't know what they, I'm not aware of what that will encompass.
We can find out and get back to you on it. It's probably just another faculty activity.
Oh, so when he puts those on there, because I was thinking, you know, usually it's kind of a parent night or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then I wanted to say the middle school, I just love that flashlight news. It was so colorful and interactive and using the new technology, I guess. So I really enjoyed that. And I like how they're all incorporating pictures in their reports. So, you know, if you can't get to the school, then you can feel like you've been there.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll pass on that feedback to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Eamol. Ms. Ayers, did you have a question?
I do have a question of Dr. Jones. And when I was looking over the field trips, how, like, on a couple, there are like six or so students going and just the one teacher and no other adults. Does that really mean that no other adults are going or maybe a parent is going? They don't count the number of parents that are going.
No, we don't count the number of parents that are going. They're really...
Regarding this?
I make a motion, we accept the consent, excuse me, consent agenda?
So a motion to approve the consent. Again, we have a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next, we have the school board advisory committee members. We have one parent, April Rowe, that we'd like to add to the Title I Parent Advisory Committee, and we're looking for approval for that addition.
All right, any questions, comments?
I make a motion, we accept the parent for the school advisory committee, as stated.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. And I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, and that's okay. We can, and we can, it relates to your motion, so that's okay. Have we ever looked at doing these on a more continuing basis rather than each year starting with a brand-new group? Because it's, we're January and we're still trying to get members for some of these committees.
I don't know that we're trying to get new members. It's just, I think when parents are approaching us.
Yeah. I tell parents that anytime you, you know, or if there's a problem they're having in the school or their child, and then I say, well, have you tried, you know, going on the committee? And, you know, so anytime of the year, I say that. So isn't it just as they go?
Right, yeah. I mean, we try to get them done by the time the first meeting starts so we have a consistent basis, but there are a variety of reasons why we may add somebody or somebody expresses an interest. We don't want to deny them the opportunity to be part of it.
Well, I truly appreciate the citizens that choose to be engaged in these committees. So we have a motion, a second. Mr. Cole?
Your comment.
No, sir, that's fine.
Mr. Walters, I, you know, I do think there is some value in looking into two-year terms because it takes...
terms because it takes so long to get them approved and get people on there. You know, it's a school board policy piece right now, so we'd have to go back and revisit that policy and whether you want to do it with every committee or just some of the committees. But I know that by, you know, on the health committee on which I serve, by the time, it's the second meeting before some people are on board.
Right.
And you're not meeting but four times a year anyway, so if you went two years...
Take a look at that.
At least some group of them, at least some proportion of them doing two years. Even if you don't do, you know, so maybe you do a two-year cycle for some, half of them, and a one-year cycle for half of them to start, and then after that, everybody does a two-year cycles. So, you got half the people coming back.
Yeah, I think we're definitely thinking in the same direction. I'd like to see it be a little longer term.
Okay, I see what you meant. I thought you, I didn't realize you meant that. Yeah, I like that idea too, Mr. Cole.
Okay. We'll look at that policy.
Okay, so we have a proper motion, a second in front of us. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next is consider approval for the budget calendar. We changed the date for the December meeting to January. We've also added the joint meeting on March eighteenth to that calendar, so we're looking for approval of the budget calendar.
All right. Do we have discussion or is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor approving the budget calendar? Respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next item is to request for federal grant certification. This is the Title Four application for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and we're asking for certification of that grant request for nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. This is about, Title Four can be used for what's termed a well-rounded education. So, we use this money for programming for classes at the middle and the high schools, particularly electives. We also have some interventions that we do during the school and summer to open up more opportunities for students that this money is used for.
All right. Questions, comments from the board? We have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request for the federal grant certification.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor approving item seven C, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Last item that I have for you this evening is some policy information, and these are for information only. The first one is GCBE, the Family Medical Leave Act policy, and a new policy on the advice of our legal counsel. A lot of the forms that we have that are tied up into the FMLA, they're old forms. We haven't updated them in a while. So, in working through some situations, our attorneys asked us to update those. So, that's the information that you have there to make sure we have the most pertinent forms that have been provided by the U.S. Department of Labor. So, that's, that's what that change is. It'll now also mirror the VSBA policy. We weren't in compliance with the VSBA policy because we didn't have the latest attachments and forms that our employees use when they're interested in learning more or applying for medical leave. So, that's GCBE, excuse me. GEA and J O H are acceptance of electronic signatures and records. You know that we've moved to an electronic filing system with our student records, which has gone very well this year, saving a lot of time for our employees. And we also use a talented system for our employees for receiving contracts and evaluations and those types of things. So, we think at this point, it's time to have a policy about electronic records and signatures. VSBA has written this and approved this policy for optional use, so we're submitting it to you for your review at this time to accept electronic signatures and records. So, review those. If you have any questions, you can contact me or Dr. Parker and we'll be happy to answer those questions for you. And we'll bring them back next month for approval.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions for Dr. Jones at this time? All right. Takes us to item eight A, that's comments by the board. Mrs. Eamol, we'll start with you if you don't mind.
Okay. I'd like to be registered for the two free webinars, Virginia Lottery, Thirty Years of Fun, Nine Billion to Education, and Combating the Stigma of Youth Mental Illness. My visits, I went to the winter concert in, at the high school and enjoyed the singing from the chorus and the instruments from the band. Afterwards, Dr. Massa played the guitar. Did all of you know that he was in a band and played the guitar?
I've seen video.
Oh, well, I saw it in person. I thought it was quite good. Okay, my daughter and I enjoyed the high school play, Rough Crossing, and the last one in December, the parade. The Powhatan Christmas Parade had a lot of school clubs and teams participating, and I thought it was a very ingenious idea to have one of our school buses in the parade. I don't know if you guys knew this, reminding people that, you know, to drive, when you're driving, to stop when you see the flashing lights and then they advertised that we needed drivers. I mean, that was perfect.
Good.
And didn't cost much. And the special ed advisory committee hosted a transition workshop last week, and it was very well-attended. Lots of good information. The high school teachers did a good job of lining up all the speakers, and I think their names are Mary Lisker and Wendy, Wendy Tillet. I thought they did a great job. And then the last thing, as I mentioned in the previous meeting, the MLK Youth Day Breakfast is this Monday at the high school. The committee was extremely pleased that they received sixteen applicants this year for their three scholarships. And all sixteen applicants will be recognized at the breakfast, and their parents are invited as well. And they're all from Powhatan High School. And a big thank you to Dr. Massa and Mr. Raimondo, and I assume your, all your guidance counselors, and they did a lot of work on that. And, you know, I was kind of embarrassed last year, but I mean, you guys have more than made up for it this year, and they're so happy. And then, last, our own Dr. Jones is receiving the Community Award this year. And that's it.
Ms. Ayers?
I don't really have a lot, anything to say, but thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. I'm sorry, I felt so bad we missed our December meeting. I can't tell everyone to have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, anyway. So, Happy New Year, and that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cole?
Main thing, just a couple compliments to the schools. One is, well, it's to the people who donated money to us, especially the ones who donated to offset the lunch money debts.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I thought they were very generous and just want to say thank you for that. And thank you to the YMCA again for learning to swim. Let's see where that's starting back up again. But from, from Appomattox Regional Governor's School, the new director is on board. One of his priorities is going to be to get the Appomattox Regional Governor's School salaries up to commensurate with the surrounding areas. That's probably going to mean a four hundred dollar increase per student. At least, that's what's on the table at this point. That will actually take them back to where they were prior to two thousand and eight in their fees. Back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when everybody's economy was going crazy, Appomattox Regional Governor's School decided that they would reduce tuition by seven hundred dollars. This would take them back to pre-recession levels. I certainly support that. They have a revolving door down there with some positions that they have a hard time keeping. The other thing that they're, we're concerned about as a board down there is the student fees that kids are paying in order to participate in that school. And so, right now, it's just a proposal, but I want to give the boards, the board and Dr. Jones a heads-up that they are looking at, you know, at, that is a maximum of four hundred dollar increase. We only have nine students down there, so it's, we're not talking gigantic sums of money. It'll still be less than Maggie Walker's tuition when this is done. So, their goal is to get closer to Maggie Walker. So, you know, we want to be at that elite status at some point.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Mr. Cunkins?
I have nothing other than want to wish the staff and everybody Happy New Year and looking forward to finishing off twenty nineteen. We're off to a great start and keep the tradition up. So, it's all, pass my time, remaining time to you.
Thank you, sir. And I would just echo that. Happy New Year to the staff. I really so appreciate the efforts that our teachers, our administration, our, our team here in Powhatan County Public Schools puts into making this just a wonderful educational experience for the teachers, and that's not one person doing that. It's everyone doing that, and it's just an honor to continue to work with you. And to my colleagues, I sincerely appreciate you, your faith in me and re-electing me to serve for an additional term as your chair, and I look forward to the things that we will accomplish together this year. I think the last two years have been very rewarding for me, and I appreciate again your faith in me. So, thank you very much. Dr. Jones?
No snow or ice. Let's get back to some normality here, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good comments, sir. All right, so that takes us to our final public comment period of the evening. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to address the board to come forward and be heard. There is a time limit of one minute per individual and three minutes per group with a total fifteen-minute time limit. Individuals wishing to address the board, again, I'd ask that they address their comments to the board as a whole and to identify themselves by name to the board.